Good morning, everyone. It's time to call this meeting to order of the Otero County Commission. Is this better? Can you hear me? Okay, all right. Welcome to the meeting of the Otero County Commission, Thursday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and can we have a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
If you could all please rise for our invocation. Father, we are here to discuss topics that will benefit the people in our community and our country. We want to think about how we can make life better for everyone. Please give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. Be our leader during this meeting. Show us the way because you have chosen us to be here. Give us direction and open our eyes to solutions that will help our country. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the State of New Mexico and the highest symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Okay, and we're going to have a proclamation now. So I'd like to read this. This is our pro- excuse me, our proclamation on Constitution Week. Whereas in nineteen fifty-five, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a resolution to set aside September seventeenth through the twenty-third, dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. Whereas the annual celebration was established when signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on August second, nineteen fifty-six, and whereas the White Sands Chapter of the Society of Daughters of the American Revolution are requesting the Board of County Commissioners at their next meeting to issue a county proclamation designating the week of September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of our Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, and whereas the citizens are urged to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, and whereas this marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, and whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating the week of September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we are here proclaiming the week of September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two to be Constitution Week. Do we have a representative here?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
She gets to keep up.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, we're going to pull a couple of themes for discussion. On the consent agenda, we're going to pull items eight, twelve, and fifteen. And on new business, we are going to pull number twenty-four and number twenty-five. I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The approval is, the agenda's approved. Okay, we'll move on to our Sheriff's Office report. Good morning.
Okay, for the Sheriff's Office, August, Otero County Sheriff responded to twenty-four hundred and seventy-nine calls for service, catered to two hundred and sixty-four investigative reports, issued eighty-seven traffic citations, conducted sixty-one traffic crash investigations, and resulted in fifty-seven total arrests. In our Narcotics Division, we had four arrests, we had eleven case reports. We had four jail possession cases, three cases with the checkpoint down south, seized six point nine grams of meth, and ninety-two fentanyl. Total of about eleven thousand dollars worth of illegal narcotics seized. In our special events, community relations, we teamed up with Thrive to assist with Pack the Bus event at Walmart, where people buy donated backpacks for their kiddos. And very next day, we assisted Mountain View Church with the distribution of those backpacks at the church on Cuba. August the seventh, we had new cadet testing to include physical testing, written test, interview panel, and PEP test. August sixteenth, we started their program at Sunrise.
I'm sorry, but nobody can hear. I can't understand anything you say.
No, I can't be here.
Is that on? I can't see the light from here.
It lights on.
Okay.
Any better? Test one, two. Any better?
You can hear it? Okay.
Okay, on the sixteenth of August, we started their program at Sunrise Elementary in Chaparral. And on the seventeenth, we started their program at Lollapack Elementary. We're still in works with, trying to get program, trying to get it started with Clark Rock Elementary. We topped there last year, but just with some staffing issues up there, we'll probably push it to the next semester, but we'll get up there. In our training for the month of August, we had four deputies and one dispatcher completing the forty-hour CIT training. And we are very close to having all employees in the agency CIT trained. I think we're setting about eighty percent right now. Jeanette's let us know about a couple more CIT classes coming up. We'll have some people in that class. We also conducted our annual firearms training, in which almost every deputy completed their qualifications with handgun, rifle, and shotgun on a day and night qualification. And we did have some conflicts with vacation schedules and stuff, and we'll make up those. That couldn't be there. In our manning issues, Deputy Clark, he is continuing his sixteen-week stint at the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy. Talked with him two weekends ago. He's doing very well up there. Deputies Kirkwood and Perez, they were the last two to attend the academy. They are currently in phase three of their FTO process. So hopefully, before too long, we'll have them on their own on the street. We did conduct physical fitness testing. We had twenty applications. Twelve people showed up. Six passed the physical. Five passed the written. One was disqualified from the process when the backgrounds were started, so we're down to five participants there. We've also received a couple of lateral transfers that we're looking into right now. I'll tell you right now, it's my goal by the end of the year to be fully staffed. And we are pushing really hard to get there. Of the two new positions that you guys authorized last meeting, I have one of those filled already. I have a deputy that came back to work for us. He's filling one of those positions. The other, hopefully, within about ten days, the other one will be filled. And we're needing it because of additional duties for transports and stuff. We got one guy that we're running ragged right now. Preston's going to help with that. He's actually on a transport today, so we'll make it work. We'll get there. We do have Marissa Ornalis. She started as a full-time dispatcher. And then Anayeli Ornalis, she resigned as a full-time dispatcher. So we're still kind of setting the status quo. We got one full-time and one part-time position open. Also hired Lucas DeGraff. He is filling a CSO position at Community Services and ACO. He started on Monday, or Tuesday. We've got him in training right now, and that'll help. We'll have all three CSO positions full, in which they not only do the animal control, but paper service, subpoenas, and stuff like that. So as it stands right now, I have five positions open, five deputy positions, one full-time dispatch, and one part-time dispatch. So like I say, my goal by the end of the year to be fully staffed. Again, on our vehicles, we picked up six new vehicles. We got two of them that are currently being upfitted. Hope to have those here in the next few weeks. Again, I wanted to say a big thank you to the Commission, to the County Manager, as well as Senators Burton, Griggs, and Representative Black for working together. You don't know how this has helped the Sheriff's Office, getting the ICIP money from you guys, through the representatives and senators. That's helped us get a bunch of old, old vehicles off the street, put them in something reliable. And the last thing on my list I want to let you know about, the Otero County will soon be taking over its fiscal agent for the White Mountain Task Force. Deputy Preston Eldredge will become the commander for the task force, and all operations will come from the Otero County Narcotics Unit. I know staffing issues are tough right now, but I hope that when staffing levels improve, these, you know, a couple of other agencies will be able to get back in there and participate in that. That is all I have. If you have questions?
David, with the task force, is it breaking up, or is it just coming to Otero County for, as a center of operations?
It's just coming here for center of operations. New to staffing levels up there, some issues. They asked me if I would take it, and I said, yes, we need that in Otero and Lincoln County, big time. So, yeah, we're going to take on that responsibility.
I only really have one question for you. I've been really busy lately, haven't had a chance to go down Rose Street. I was just wondering what our situation is on that.
RB and I actually talked about that a couple of weeks ago, really. I've got a video and some photographs that I wanted to present to him, and then talk with him as far as providing that individual with a letter stating, you know, this needs to be taken care of due to being very busy here lately, I have not got that to him, but I will make that available and get that to him.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning. Matt Clark, Department of Services Director. For August, the volunteers responded to eighty-six calls. Seven of them were fires, three of them being structural fires, and forty-nine EMS calls. Code enforcement had thirty-five new cases. Five of them were solid waste, one illegal burn, and they have a junk vehicle on there. They closed thirty-one. We did two fire inspections, three fire investigations, completed thirty-nine follow-ups. And the slash pit was open and closed for August weather, but the days it was open, it was very busy. The days that even in the rain before they closed it, before it got muddy, there were still people bringing it in during the rainstorm.
That's good.
It is.
Matt, I just have a couple of questions for you. One, have we got a person hired for the position in Chaparral at the fire station?
We have not. There's no one has applied yet.
Can, is anybody wanting to do a lateral from here? Can they, will they?
Possibly, but more than likely, no. We are making sure that we're down there more, doing the codes. Just not helping out the way we were hoping it would. We really thought we'd give more, but at the same time, we're competing with Los Cruces, Doñana Fire, NASA Fire, and the City of El Paso. All of them just had massive hiring events, so kind of took from my pool.
So you mentioned on the code, Bowls Acres has been a big topic on the code lately. Have we been addressing some of those? I know you have a new code enforcement.
They have.
And then the other deal is, are we, I guess we're still waiting for some of that stuff to dry out in Bowls Acres, on the droney stuff, to address those?
Yes. Yeah, once it dries out, we'll be able to address it more.
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
I didn't recognize you with that stuff. Like Grisly Adams.
Not a Flamingo shirt. Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Porter with Otero County Real Department. So for August, we finished chip sealing high rolls. And that finishes up the twenty-two season for chip sealing. We've been inundated with floods for the last few weeks, so we've been hauling material all over throughout the county. Sixteen Springs area is one of the harder ones hit. Down there on the Mason, it hit pretty hard also. So I actually toured some of that yesterday. We're working, finally drying up enough now that we can start mowing. I know it looks horrible out there right now, but you can't get the mowers off the side of the road as wet as it's been. And unfortunately, nothing grows until we get the moisture. Been blading various roads throughout the county along with the flooding. And we actually had to do an emergency gabion repair over there on the intersection of Taylor Ranch and Dog Canyon. We were fixing to lose the intersection there, so we went in and built the retaining wall and a gabions and did some patching on that, so secured that intersection.
I got a call the other day on Fresno Canyon. Have you been up there lately?
So right now, on that project, we're waiting for Century Link to finish moving theirs. Co-op has got the pole moved. We're just waiting for Century Link to get their line to go to the car hole with Co-op.
Okay. So we're kind of at their mercy right now?
We're at their mercy right now.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Trent Parker, Project Manager. Got a pretty short list this month. The detention center, booking renovation is going along great. Phase one is in all the finished process. Phase two, they completed in this past month, the demo of everything. They've got their plumbing route back in for the new facility, and they're scheduled to place the concrete on Friday. Same goes for the medical renovations. As of this month, all of the demolition has been completed for the project, and these last two areas are going along pretty rapidly. And I think we'll be able to finish by the October nineteenth. They also completed the operators on the sliding gates outside, which completes all of the perimeter fencing. The roofers are on site finishing up their final few penetrations in the renovation areas, and then they'll be able to complete the rest of the roof. That pretty much has it all for the detention center. Chin's phase three, we're still waiting on the hundred percent drawings. Those are supposed to be sent out today to DFA for their approval on their side of it. And as soon as we get that approval back, we'll be able to go out to bid for Chin's phase threes. The EOC's been going along really good. The new roof is on and complete. All the insulation upgrade is complete. They completed the framing, and they've got all their MEP in, and they've started drywall in all the new training room areas. They have the ceilings put in in the front office areas that were previously complete, and they're going to keep working on finishes in those areas. The PSF, we held a pre-bid meeting on August twenty-fifth, and the bid opening will be September fifteenth at two P.M. here at our offices. And then we'll be seeking a boardment approval from the Commission in October.
Trent, the corrections that were going to be made on the roofing project up there, have they been corrected in satisfaction?
At the prison?
No, at Matt's office.
Yes.
They got all that taken care of?
Yeah.
Did we finally get all the video and all that stuff lined up, out at the jail? Where they watch the cameras, like in the fishbowl, and they're getting everything hooked up?
They're still working on some integrations. We're waiting on some countertops so that they can set the permanent, where the screens permanently go, which will help tremendously. It's getting there. And the integrations, they're integrating all the new stuff as it comes online. It's going along pretty good.
Good, that's good news.
All the questions I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carol.
Carol Embrell, Correction Services Director. So today's population, total population is a hundred and eighty inmates. We have eighty-three total in-house, sixty-nine males and fourteen females. We currently have twenty-four at the Otero Prison. We have thirty at Hudson County, twenty-eight in Doñana County, two in Socorro, zero in Luna County, and nine in Lees County. We still have four at the Department of Corrections. And as of yesterday morning, it was two in Las Vegas, but now it's only one. One's been returned to us. Now that we have started to move these people out, these individuals out to the facility, now it seems that courts have started up, and now it's hard because now we're having to bring them back with the assistance of the Sheriff's Office and some of my staff trying to go and get them and bring them back so that they can attend court, whether it be for jury trial or criticals or whatever the case may be. The average population for August was two hundred and nine. We currently have two male juveniles in the Doñana County Detention Center. Total amount of inmates booked into our facility for the month of August was a hundred and forty-eight. We had a kind of a steam operation with law enforcement, with the Sheriff's Office last actually, it was in August, I think it was August, where we suspected an officer of bringing contraband into the facility. The operation consisted of having the officer arrested, with two females that assisted in bringing the drugs to the facility. The, all three were arrested, incarcerated. We received notice the, I believe it was last week, that they were all indicted, brandery indicted. On Thursday, August sixteenth, we had an emergency response to the facility. Two of my officers and a nurse responded to a mail down, an inmate mail down in the pod. As they entered, whatever he had been smoking, they inhaled it, and they passed out. They were all transported to the hospital. They have since returned to work. But, and they did find, we did have officers, it was Garcia, Gomez, Miller, Denning, Smith. They all, what was found in there was four yellow in color pills, fifteen fentanyl pills, two other different type of yellow pills. Those could not all be identified because when they put them in their mouth and they're trying to hide them, they tend to take off that number that identifies them. So those, all those yellow pills were unable to be identified to what they actually were. A razor blade and other miscellaneous items. We want to thank all the arresting agencies, Albor DPS, AMR, State Police, Albor Flower Department, and the County Emergency Services Director, and the County Safety Officer, and all the volunteer firefighters for assisting us with that matter. It was a very scary situation. Thank God, everything was fine. I received notice last week that Doñana County will no longer be assisting us with providing courts for the juveniles over Google meets or video. Then, so we will have to start transporting them back to Otero County so that they can have court. So that's going to impact us a little bit, too. I'd like to give some recognition for discovered contraband throughout the month of August to my staff. We've had, we've been busy. It's been really busy out there. Corporal Sanchez, upon an inmate returning from the hospital, searched an individual sweatpants and came across ten pills of fentanyl. They were in his possession. They were sewn, or they were inside the actual seam of the pants. of the pants. The drugs were, of course, we believe that they, when they came in, they were brought in by retro. Officer Ortiz, Vargas, and Locas found a note suggesting trading of drugs for meals. When they just, when they went into that particular room, one pill was found with fentanyl. It was found on the inmate's paper. Officer Garcia and Smith, while searching an inmate that was brought in by an arresting agency on charges, while they were being searched, a value was dropped to the inmate's genitals. And it contained a blue substance colored pill, which we believe to be fentanyl. Also in his wallet, yes, he was in possession of some. We also have another one with Officer Ortiz and Vargas and Studdard and Armstrong responded to one of the main housing pods where an inmate attempted to start a fire. It was a small fire. They responded quickly and put it out. It was made up of pages from the Bible and other miscellaneous papers, colored paper included, but they put it out very quickly, so didn't get any, didn't do any damage. The Deputy Director, the Lieutenant, and myself have all been doing transports as needed. We have, one day, the Lieutenant, I mean, the Deputy Director and I did a transport with females up to Grants. Another day, we did a transport to Central New Mexico Correction Facility and took six inmates, six male inmates. The Deputy Director and Lieutenant went on a fourteen and a half hour trip. They, we had to go to Lincoln, Secorro, Los Luna, Grants, back to Secorro, just to get everybody to and from that needed to get back. So, um, we began having some issues with Luna County when we moved our inmates out to them. They weren't assisting us with courts, telephonic courts. So we ended up making arrangements with Hudson County and Newton County to move the inmates we had there. So we ended up moving twelve to the county, and we moved ten to Lincoln County, and the remaining four came back. We went and picked them up along with maintenance. The four of us all went and picked them up and brought them back. Maintenance had to go because we had left them our, all the bedding, because they didn't have enough bedding for the inmates that they'd taken. So we had to collect all of that and bring it back as well. So those were some very, very long days, all of us. We are still in course in crisis with staffing. We currently still have twenty-seven employees, nineteen full-time and one part-time. Total vacancies of thirty-two. We do have, we, we tested three employees, we actually had three applicants, we tested them, and we were gonna hire all three. One came back, both, two of them declined, and we hired one. The individual was there for possibly, I did, three days, and on the third day, he called and said he wasn't coming back. His previous employer was gonna offer him more money with bonus, so therefore, he decided to quit. We had six applications about a week and a half ago, and we did test and interview them. Four showed. We hired two, and two were not hired. So we do have one coming in tomorrow to start, and one coming in on Tuesday.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Carolyn, appreciate everything that y'all are doing out there with all the transport with the sheriff and stuff. I know it's a big pain, but I really feel that it's a safety issue for the inmates and your personnel, that we're having to do this, kind of get things scattered out to where we have enough people to try to take care of things. So I, I understand the inconvenience, but I also appreciate everything that y'all are doing too, so.
We're still hoping to move some more out. It's just that we're waiting on Doñana County to get with us when they're ready, and then they'll be coming and picking up some more. They just, they did pick up twenty last week, so we will be making contact with them again and see, because they promised they would take sixty, so we're hoping to get some more out.
We appreciate your hard work out there. It's not an easy job. You're in Tom's job, I wouldn't want him. Roads are, roads are the jail. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do you want to talk about these at the very end?
We can do it either way. You can do it, yeah, if you want to.
Okay. All right, I'll read through the ones that, that we didn't pull. Okay. Item number one, request approval of accounts payable bill, less BL four, BL five, BL six, BL seven. Number two, request approval of July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two special meeting minutes. Number three, request approval of August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Number four, request approval of August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two special meeting minutes. Number five, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for September twenty-twenty-two. Number six, request approval of resolution number zero-nine dash zero-eight dash two-two slash one-one-one dash one-four budget adjustments, physical year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Number seven, request approval of resolution number zero-nine dash zero-eight dash twenty-two slash one-one-one dash fifteen to approve the lease management agreement between Otero County and Health New Mexico Incorporated for the Chaparral Community Center. Number nine, request approval to appoint Tom Porter to the Southeast Regional Transport Planning Organization. Number ten, request approval, approval of a grant agreement between Otero County and the Department of Finance and Administration in the amount of four-hundred thousand dollars to purchase the equipment, to purchase and equip Sheriff's Department vehicles. Number eleven, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between the New Mexico Department of Public Safety and Otero County for physical year twenty. OCS Department Operations Stone Garden in the amount of one-hundred-and-seven-thousand four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-one cents. Number thirteen, request approval to submit grant applications to New Mexico Emergent, Emergency Medical Systems Bureau, Local Systems Improvement Projects, EMS Vehicle Purchase Project, and Statewide EMS Systems Improvement Project. Number fourteen, request approval to appoint Mike. McKechnie. I knew how to say that, but I couldn't get it out. Mike McKechnie to the Otero County Planning Commission. And then we pulled a few that Commissioner, now that we wanted to speak to.
Okay, number eight. These are very simple items. Number eight in the resolution, there was some spelling. The abbreviation for Otero County Fair Association, you've got it OFCA instead of OCA, EPE, and it's just on the resolution part, if we can get that corrected before we.
You got it corrected.
You got it corrected, okay. So that one's good, just on the resolution part, if we can get that corrected before we.
You got it corrected.
You got it corrected, okay. So that one's good, just on the resolution part, if we can get that corrected before we. You got it, you got it corrected, okay.
We're hearing a feedback.
And then twelve, is Matt still in here? Can you ask Matt to come in real quick? The reason why I'm pulling twelve, I, I just have a question. It's a, it's for grant purposes on funding. The, this particular one, twelve and thirteen are both grant applications for the EMS and the Fire Department. This particular one on twelve is a ten percent cost match, so I am just curious as what the grant is to be, to be, to be expecting for the ten percent. So I'm hoping Matt can. So Matt, on twelve, my, my question is, twelve and thirteen, you're both applying for grants.
Correct.
Twelve is a ten percent match, thirteen isn't, according to what I'm reading on the paperwork. My, my question is, is what are the grants going to be so I can have in my mind what this ten percent match is going to be, that the county will be doing?
The Fire Departments will take that out of their fire, state fire budget.
The ten percent?
For the ten percent, yes.
Okay.
And it'll be for any wildland equipment. The only thing that they stipulated we couldn't buy were boots. But other than that, as long as it's for wildland, we could get up to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's not big grants, it's just, it's smaller grants?
It's all small grants, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to.
And, and the departments have to budget out of their, our state fire funds, if they get.
Okay. That, that was all? Just needed to kind of, little clarification. I know Pamela and I both talked about this, but I was still a little, so, that, that's all I have on that. On, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
On, on fifteen, I just got some information late last night. Steve, is Steve still here? There he is. I just got the tax rate and stuff last night to look at. I was just gonna let you kind of explain this a little.
So you need another copy? Steve Boyle assessed it for a few more months anyway. So you got everything you got?
Yeah, we got it this morning, yeah. I got the one you sent me earlier.
Okay, so we just received these last week, the Commissioners did. This is a, just a formal process where basically all of the taxing agencies, the schools, the county, the city, they all, they put, they complete their budgets, and they send them into the Finance Department with the state. The state looks at the values that we have supplied to them earlier in July from our office, and then they apply and come up with tax rates based on those budgets, so. So there's some good news here. Now, this year, we went up about five point seven percent in value, where about one-point four-two-nine billion in assessed value. That's not full value. You'd have to like multiply that by three to get what the county's really worth. Feedback, huh? But anyway, usually when values are going up at a good rate, like we went up five point seven percent in values over last year, and the reason why is the sales, the houses are selling for more, and cloud crop, and the mountains, the land is really going up on sales, so I was taking those up to get those closer to what their value is. Anyway, usually when values go up pretty good, then tax rates stay the same or go down. Think of it like this, that if there's so many dollars needed to take care of the county and the city and the schools, if the values are up, then the taxes can go down, the rates can go down, not the actual taxes, but the rates go down because there's more value to cover what dollars are needed, so. But the good news here, sorry, probably getting a little bit crazy here, right, is that for the most part, most of the jurisdictions, the taxing jurisdictions are going down anywhere from like zero to two or three percent. So, so usually people's taxes are going up. I can tell you that for Tolosa though, Chaparral's pretty close to even, but Tolosa's up a little, but they had that big bond, you know, a year ago, school bond, so. And the values of Tolosa haven't really been climbing as much as they have in some of the other jurisdictions, so. But yeah, so there's good news here, and I'd like to say this is just a process where the Commissioners, I mean, I've looked at it, it looks reasonable based on what information I have. You guys just basically approve it, you know, as part of what you do, and then we go on. And the next steps are, once you approve, then we take that information, apply it to all of our values in the system, and we provide a tax roll to the Treasurer. So within the next few weeks, we do that, and then of course, as you know, the Treasurer is gonna be sending bills out after they get that information to all the residents. So, any questions?
No, I just kind of want you to just run us through and just shoot us a little briefing on it, so. All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Is everything on the consent agenda item? Would I make, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items? All in favor? Or we second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to the scheduled citizen communication, Warden Rios.
Good morning. Deputy Warden, Warden Rios was unable to make it this morning.
Okay.
But I have my maintenance supervisor, Vince Loan, who's gonna discuss the roof issues that we're having.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Vince Loan, Maintenance Supervisor at Otero County Prison Facility. The issues that we're bringing up today are the pods, west and east pods. The UOPRIM is kind of outdated, you know, done their lifetime and everything. I have been talking to Trent Parker, helping us out on this, looking at this issue and everything. We're also looking into the north and south pods that are following suit. We would like to discuss bids that we've already done with the other roof, with the other companies, and with the help of Trent, we're gonna show you some pictures of the scope of it and everything, to see what it looks like and how to, you know, where the repairs that we have done already so far to try to prolong it a little bit longer until we can find suitable contractors to fix this and use the grid in. We can do a couple more pictures. And this picture here shows, if you're looking at this way on your right side, that's the west and east pods, and then on the other side is the north and south, of course. The west and east are most, they're already done their lifetime, it's already been twenty years, going on twenty years now, and some of the repairs that we have done already, you know, that Trent has already, Mr. Parker already came up and looked at, I think you've already came and looked at those two at the same time. We did do the repair and everything, it did work, so we would like to see if we can submit, you know, talk to the company that faced the main roof to see what kind of bid they would give us on that, and they said they would come up with, I think, three different types of bids that they could work with, but they have not submitted those yet.
Trent, are those TPO roofs?
Yes. Yeah, those are TPO roofs. What we're looking at is roughly seventy thousand square foot of roof, pretty large area. That picture really doesn't do much justice. There are some, there was an assessment done a little over a year ago when we were working on the main part of the roof, and in that year's time, we went back down to do a one year warranty assessment of the new roof, and the staff here, they, they brought up to our attention that this roof is actually getting worse, so we had the same company do a reevaluation of it, and just in a year's time, it had really deteriorated a lot. It's still at the point that we can save it. One end is a little bit, the east end is a little bit worse than the west end. The west, we can remedy with coating. The other end, we can retrofit a, and pretty much cap over the existing roof. Hey, if you scroll down to the end of the page, it's about page fifteen. Right there. This is some of the areas that, of the roof that you can see water damage in. The smaller picture, you can't really see it, but the fibers in the TPO are starting to deteriorate and wear through. Scroll a couple more pictures. One more, two more pictures. Right there. This is some areas that are really worn down around the AC units, you know, the water kind of stands behind us. It's a pretty low slope roof, with a lot of AC units, and they're not created behind the units, so the water tends to hold behind them. It had a lot of AC units, and they're not crickety behind the units, so the water tends to hold behind those units, and those areas have a larger amount of deterioration there. Uh, these, can you go to page 19? Page 19 kind of shows some areas, that top picture, it's hard to see, but it's really worn down. Go to page... One more. In this page, you can see up on the top, it's a pretty worn, worn out area. Scroll a couple more, please. Oh, back, back one. In the, in the picture down, that material is completely loose on that corner, there's actually three corners that were like that, and the repairs that Vince and his crew made secured that back down temporarily, but those patches have only pulled for, I, I had to guess at least a couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years.
But, they, they did the patching to try to avoid any moisture getting in and causing further damage to the, the facility, but it is in pretty bad shape. I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Good morning, Chris, Eric, I know the building and grounds are retained, so Trent pretty much gave you the gist of what Mr. Loan was telling me. We're running into the same issue we ran into when we had to replace the main part of the roof because it was leaking. The only difference is that, of course, was a metal roof, and now we're looking at TPO with the life span is even shorter. We were able to get some pricing, um, from Garland, uh, on different, um, different proposals for different ways of doing it. I think it's in the paperwork that you were given. So, at this point, basically what we're, just trying to put this on the radar to let you know that this is something we're gonna have to look at doing, whether we do the entire project or whether we phase it out into two parts. As Trent was saying, the one side of the roof on the east side is, is pretty bad, and that's probably gonna, gonna be our main concern starting out. I don't think it would take them as long to do the opposite side. So, that being said, we're just looking to put this on the radar, we can come back with some more.
So, you're looking at the, at these proposals they have is anywhere from 900,000, excuse me, to 1.3 or 1.4, depending on which option you go?
Yeah, and the coating on the west end, what's, what it is, around 250,000 for the coating, and that comes with a 15-year warranty. And so, it's a pretty good warranty for, for the money, uh, full replacement's a little over $70,000 for that dynamic.
Yeah.
We're looking at a little over $2 million to replace, if we had to replace the entire 70,000 square foot, so. If we can salvage what we have now and, and extend the life of it by 15 years, I think we're doing pretty good for the money.
And that, that proposal with the 15-year is both, both buildings?
Recapping the one and the coating, the other coating that are, with the opening.
And that's the 903 to the 962 one, the first one?
Yeah.
Are they doing damage inside, Vince?
Yes, uh, actually, like on the east side that he was talking about, it did bubble up paint and come into one of the pods. Uh, we, when, as soon as we fixed it with the patching and everything, that actually stopped that, it really stopped that, but like you said, we just want to, you know, get ahead of it before it causes any more damage like the others did. And, uh, but we did the whole, we also did the left side too, we did the patching before we started working on that.
Sounds like a really flat roof, is that right?
It is, it's a very flat roof.
Yeah. Part of what's proposed on the, um, the repairs of the roof would be to crick it behind everything so that the water doesn't stand on the roof. And they would do this all the way off of the roof. And they would be, not only capping on the east end, but they would also be reinforcing around the perimeter with additional materials, so. I mean, it's a pretty good application for, for that process.
But those roofs are all positive flow? To where they're not gonna have to do an insulation buildup through anything? So, you, are you looking to try to put this, get something together and try to get this put out pretty quick, or? I guess we're gonna, gonna have to do some magic over there.
Uh, I think this would have to come from probably a combination of general fund and our quarter percent hold harmless gross receipts tax, uh, just depending on, you know, the total amount, so. Have to look at that, unless, I don't know if there's any chance for capital outlay funding on this, probably it needs to be done before we could even request that, I'm guessing.
With the repairs that were done, and Vince had sent us pictures of the repairs, they did a, a really excellent job with those repairs. I think we gained ourselves a year, so, I mean, I think if we had it in next year's budget, we would be okay. I don't think it's quite an emergency situation that, that it does need to be replaced through the same.
That would be a year from right now then before we could do anything, right? Or a year from?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'd have to actually take a look at that. I'm sure we could probably find it if we absolutely had to in this budget, but like I said, it would, it would come mostly from the general fund.
Then my fear is only if everything keeps going up, is it gonna cost?
Right.
So, you will stay in contact with Trent, and if it continues leaking, we'll need to address this immediately?
I'll stay in contact with both of them, let them know, but like I said, right now, we got it, where it's not leaking, we have to sort of, we have to add it there and stuff like that, so. We just stay on top of it, you know, we'll, we'll be good.
Okay.
And Commissioner, we may have, uh, funding to do some more significant repairs if that's what needs to be done to hold us over for possibly six months to even a year, if that's the case. But right now, like I said, we're just trying to get it on the radar based on, like you were saying, price increases, um, our delay times and delivery product and those kinds of things to try to make sure we can keep the ball rolling, that way we're not putting ourselves a year and a half behind the curve or even longer.
Appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brenda?
Yes. Yes, Brenda Cocker, in the morning, to all of you.
You want to sit down at the mic so they can hear you, please?
I usually can't.
The people at home can't hear you if, if you don't speak in. It won't bite you.
Okay, everybody here. This is a signed petition for mainly, um, Chihuahua Road, which is north of town in the county, and, uh, we're mostly a retired neighborhood, and when we purchased land, uh, in Seville, so we were told that about 13 years ago that it was gonna be clean to the county. 13 years ago. As we know, it hasn't been, and the problem that we have is, and I did have photos. I bet it doesn't matter because it just is, just like buying a house online, you do that without looking at it, you really don't see the damage. But the most severe hole that we had was about, I don't know, three and a half, four foot diameter, it was about 18 inches deep, and unfortunately, I didn't take photos of that so that you could see, it, it didn't quite come up to my knee, but when a car hits that, and when people come out there that don't necessarily live there, their guests or whatnot, you can blow a tire or take your oil pan out, it, it really gets deep, and that's mainly at that Critter Lane-Chihuahua, uh, intersection, and that gets some heavy traffic down that road, is, I'm sure the sheriff's department can say, they say they're down that road, Critter Lane, quite often, there's no gravel on that road, it's mud, so when you get a little bit of weather and a little bit of freezing, the next thing you know, just even the mud or the, the frozen water does tend to create, it's just a tar and chip, and it, it really gets packed in there, and the next thing you know, you've got holes coming again. Well, about three, four months ago, Randy Raven came out and he filled those holes again. We all, since we bought the land from him, we begged him to please come out again. That's who's been maintaining that road, and I don't think, I don't know who owns the road, but obviously you guys don't yet. But we, whether you paved the road or not, we really, especially at that intersection, need to have those holes, and they're coming. It's, it's coming out again, getting bad again, but just for the sake of our vehicles, uh, please just have holes fixed. We know how expensive it is, you know, I, I don't think it's bad enough for paving or a chip and tar. I wouldn't expect a paving, chip and tar is great, but again, just some hole fixing would be great. And I do have the original paperwork here so that I can represent that. I don't know how much it would cost.
What I would have to ask our road superintendent is, if this road has been in the process for 13 years, has it ever been accepted by the county?
It was denied, as far as I know, I think, um, oh my goodness, I can't remember how long ago it was now, but they said the ba, this was for a paving, I guess, that the base was not properly done. Well, it's...
Oh, hi.
So...
So, uh, to address you and you, so in 2016, the road was turned over to the county to put on a time clock.
Oh.
And Mr. Quoffey, at that time was the superintendent, did the initial, um, survey of that. In 2018, I went back out, and I probably have a lot of the same photos that you have.
I think I have better ones, because mine, I didn't take them.
Yeah, I went through and did the determination, and I brought it before the county commission that due to the deficiencies in the subdivision and the condition of the road, drainage ditches, signage, and all...
That's not in our subdivision.
Yes, it is.
Chihuahua Road is in our...
It's part of the subdivision, yes ma'am.
Really?
So, so Tom, let me ask you a definition, you said on a time clock, what is?
So, for the county to take over a subdivision, and we've got three of them down in Chaparral right now that are on a two-year time clock. And the time the contractor finishes building the subdivision, for two years, they have to maintain the roads, and then we go in at the end of two years, check out the subdivision, check out the roads, make sure that everything is staying to the point that, you know, we would accept it for maintenance. The ditches have been, you know, are keeping a good flow line, culverts are not collapsing, we're not getting potholes, and at that point, we do an investigation, make sure the roads are, like I said, staying up to par. We bring it before the commission with our suggestion whether we accept or decline taking this on as a county road. These roads were not to par with anything that we have as far as subdivision ordinance, and my recommendation to y'all in the team was we did not accept this for maintenance. The contractor was made aware of this, which is why they've been out there and patching holes, but they, they also had a copy of my report, so they knew what to fix for the deficiencies, and they have not done anything with it, other than a little bit of drainage.
Well, my petition is just for Chihuahua, not inside.
Which, which if you go back through it, is part of that subdivision, yes.
Well, but, I, I know, but we can't, we as, that live inside of the subdivision, because, so you're, all those people that live past and live off of Critter Lane, they benefit from, that is not in our, Critter Lane surely is not in our subdivision.
No, Critter is not, but that is not a county maintained road either.
No kidding. But, I, I guess the, the main thing is, if it really gets bad and we have to get out of there, that's our only way out of that subdivision. If we go su, uh, south, I had to think which way, that's a dirt road that it will, I mean, if you had a big four-by-four or a...
It's the one that goes, the wall, the real truck.
It comes back out at the stoplight.
Yeah, and it comes out behind the theater, but the Aurora there is, you know, without a bridge, you're not gonna get over that. So, that's our only way in, our only way out, and like I said, it's, we, we have talked in the, the bid, in what we consider the subdivision, inside our area, that, you know, need be, we can press some Raven to get out there and pick, or we can, you know, as citizens, as old as we are, you know, get out there and, I don't know, concrete the holes or something if push came to shove, but a lot of that damage is caused because of Critter Lane. And what's down Critter Lane, and they ain't paying nothing for nothing. But, that's, um, so that's our main thing, we would really just mainly like to just have some maintenance on those holes so that we could be assured, and I don't know how, I can't believe how fa, how fast this last repair is falling apart. So, that doesn't even seem to be up to par with what we just worked in the past.
What's, what's happening on Critter Lane that's?
Just the mother truck, I'm sure the sheriff would like to contribute to that, I guess.
Yeah, if we ever needed, uh, the sheriff right away, we, they could probably get their house just like that, because I know that his staff is down that lane with those twigs, with those people.
Well, Tom, this is one of those deals coming off of your suggestion on what we have. Have, have we got with Mesa Verde on?
I actually just got this one back from one of their superintendents, gave that moment to him two years ago, so that they could see what they needed to do.
Well, I'm going to know the truth of the situation.
One of the big things I can, I can tell you is keep, keep on with, uh, the Ravens and Mesa Verde.
I, I, well, it's getting very difficult. It's, it took us probably a year just to, begging and pleading and emailing and writing and calling and, you know, you know when you're, you have a diff here. So, you know, just let me stand in the corner, but we're heading for you.
Tom, maybe if you could check with the supervisor that, and see if they intend on doing anything? I mean, I understand it's not, county hadn't accepted, there's the same issue going on in Chaparral too, it's the same type of deals that we're having to deal with, so.
But like I said, you know, we're not asking for a new tar and chip or whatnot, it's mainly, and just, we can take care of our own interior, but it's that main road that not only Critter Lane, but the people beyond, that's their only way in and out also. So, they're passing through, you know, what is supposedly, I guess now we know who that other people were that was listed that owned that land that was on that frontage. Okay, well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it, and thank you. Appreciate it. This is the original signature, rather than, that's a white copy, rather than electronic copy.
Um, I'm good with the copy I have.
Oh.
Okay, so we'll move on to our unscheduled citizens' communication, these are limited to three minutes. Uh, the first one is Carolyn Kittle. Which is?
The, the sign of this.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning. I'm here representing, uh, people who ride the Zia bus to Los Cruces, and it's my understanding that that, um, service will cease if it hasn't already. I've heard two dates, one the first of October and one the end of October, I'm hoping it hasn't ended. I just wonder if there's anything that we can do to save it. I just wonder if there's anything that we can do to save it. I understand that Donaana County has pulled their end of the funding, you may know somebody about that more than I do, but I'm just wondering if it can be salvaged because it helps a lot of people who need transportation to Los Cruces for medical appointments, to visit people in hospitals, the students who can't take courses here in Alamo Gordo, who need to go to Los Cruces. And I have been on the bus when people have been picked up to work in Los Cruces.
We contributed to that. Pamela, can you...
I was pulling up the budget adjustment now. It's $25,000. Yeah, it's $25,000 we approved today to fund that.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, wonderful, thank you.
Can I help you a little bit?
I'm a happy camper.
Thank you. Next on the list is Coy Griffin.
I just wanted to stop real quick today to address item number 22 on our agenda as a request to look at the contract of Roy Nichols. I don't know what's going to happen, but I just want to give my piece real quick. Whenever Roy, we hired Roy, I knew that Roy had represented the recall committee against me, but yet I was able to look past that because Roy told me that, on two things, one, that he was a Marine, which I have great respect for, and also that he had studied the law in order to fight back against the government. And during my stay and watching Roy, I haven't seen Roy fight back to protect us commissioners or the county in any way. And so I would strongly urge you against any type of a raise or any type of, even a continuance in my, would be my opinion. But we really need counsel in the county that's willing to protect elected officials, protect county employees, and not just comply with everything that comes down the pipe because that's one of the strongest positions that we have.
Who protects the citizen from people like you?
Secondly, secondly, I'd like for you guys to have the respect of the people of Otero County to let them know what's going on with the Tulie-Gret Gate Road and that grant. When I sat on the board, I warned very strongly about taking $365,000 from our general fund to pay for this, these plans on this road without having the funding secured. And as I've been told and as I've heard, it sounds like that funding is still not secured. So $365,000 of the taxpayers' money to be gambled with, I think should at least, at the very least, deserve an explanation to the people on where everything is at. And thirdly, I'd just like to say that this has been the hardest time of my life, not that I'm trying to get anybody's sympathy, but it's been very difficult for me. I was never notified officially by the county of any actions before they took them. You know, I was called up that morning by Pamela and told that the county had already seized my computer and been in my office, and I didn't even, I hadn't even heard that the judge had even rendered an opinion yet. And right now, today, as this meeting goes on, I'm up in my office cleaning my desk out as Shaw and Jet, the under sheriff, is standing guard inside of my office. And that's all directed inside of the county. That's, I think that it's just, it's very difficult that I don't have the respect of being able to be out by Friday without having the county sheriff or the sheriff's department standing guard and taking my key away and only allowing me in my office at their discretion. But thank you, thank you for letting me voice my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Lang Brown.
Yes, I'm Denise Lang Brown, and I just want to thank you for getting back to good governing. Good government can help people. And what I'm seeing here is discussions about roads and infrastructure and our detention center, taxes, revenue, and this is what all of us has wanted to have, kind of boring, getting down to just the nuts and bolts of taking care of the people's needs and getting away from unnecessary lawsuits that just cost all of us taxpayers and cost our public confidence. So I just want to thank you both for doing what you're elected to do. That's all.
Thank you. You don't want to speak, Matt? Okay, all right. I'm going to mark you off the list. Okay.
And I had one email.
Oh, okay.
But it pertains to item 25, and I know that was pulled, is that...
It is pulled.
It is pulled.
So is it not going to be discussed?
No.
Okay, so seeing as that's a moot issue, I don't think I need to read this comment.
All right, we'll move on to our new business. Item number 19, request approval of a letter of support of the cancer awareness prevalence, preservation and early detection capped for their Trinity Turtle Healing Wyworth Park project.
Teresa Van Linkel was requested to be here to present this item. It's from her.
Okay. Is Teresa here? I didn't see her this morning.
I can't speak on behalf of the item.
Okay, I don't know either. Okay, I guess we'll move on to number 20 then. Request approval of intergovernmental agreement for regional mobile crisis response team, MCRT, in the amount of $150,000 annually. Good morning.
Good morning, Amber.
Good morning, Commissioner Amber Mayhall, healthcare services director. So, over the past several years, since my employment with, within this department, I have slowly been implementing a plan so that this department can spend money in the way that it is supposed to, since the expansion of Medicaid and the implementation of the Affordable Care Act are, the way the program has been set up in the past no longer work. And also, we have dealt with individuals who do come in and want assistance, they don't necessarily want to complete an application for assistance because the verified qualification statement is subject to public record. And most of the people that do come in don't want their name to be put out there that they have received assistance. This agreement here today ensures that we will not be requesting an application. We are doing a presumption of contingency for any person who is in need of crisis assistance, that's behavioral health, mental health and substance use related issues. And this will help our law enforcement officers to provide a better quality of service to the community with the assistance of a clinical director or two and peer support workers, so that we can also reduce the amount of interactions with law enforcement, so people get the assistance that they need, and also to help reduce the amount of individuals that are booked at our detention center. So that's kind of a little bit of a genuine. I have outlined in this agreement the steps that we have taken over the years to get to this point, including our community health assessment, the fact that we have sent stage one of the grant and the request that we have been involved. So, and I do want to indicate that I have been very lucky to work with our sheriff's office and with APD, and everyone has been incredibly supportive of this effort and recognize that this is something that is needed in our community. So I just want to thank everyone. So, so for, just so that you can kind of get an idea of how important this program is, I did receive some data points for our last fiscal year, so I'm just going to briefly go over. So for our last fiscal year, so that's 2021, there were a full of 3,023 call calls. And just a reminder, right now, this mobile crisis team, it only operates within the city of Alamo Gordo. So that 3,000 calls, that's just Alamo Gordo. So we're going to be expanding these services to all areas of Otero County, incorporated and unincorporated. There were 1,715 calls for the clinical director and 83 on-call scenes. So the clinical director and four peer support person were able to actually go to the scene and provide assistance in person. And there were 493 referrals to the community. And what that means is that individuals who needed additional assistance, for instance, with, within the public health community, whether it be behavioral health, mental health or medical, they were referred to the proper providers. They were also given information on how to get assistance with bills if they were receiving, if they had financial insecurities, food insecurity and stuff like that. So for, for this agreement, it is going to touch an incredible amount of lives in the deep community for the least amount of money that I could do for, from this particular fund. So it was a cost benefit. We were going to have a larger benefit than if I would be able to have to provide a clean speech program. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one, if we can back up just a little bit. Any money that comes from the county, and Pamela, you can probably correct me on this if I'm not understanding it right, anything that comes through the county is always subject to the public record. So you were, it's not, that's not true?
Not for our program. So under our program, it is covered under HIPAA, and that is in statute. So anything that has to do with medical services, behavioral health services, substance use services, it's not public record. What is public record under the act is the verified qualification statement. That's a client, patient signing their name to basically an affidavit indicating that they do not have the funds for the services that they receive.
So, I'm just trying to get it all, so if somebody was to ask, your program helped somebody, an individual, the public can't ask?
We cannot provide names, we cannot provide any personally identifiable information. I can't release their account numbers, I cannot release any information about that date of birth, nothing.
Because of all our medical...
Yes.
Okay, I got it now.
My only question is, it says here that a household making $73,980 or below qualifies as an indigent patient, and the median income for Otero County is like $44,000. So basically, this would cover everybody, you know?
You're absolutely correct, and that's why we're in it that way, and it's not based upon the median income. It is based on the PCPI, which in the agreement, I do outline what that PCPI is, and that is stated specifically in statute, that that's the statute determiner. It's like $43,000 from 2021, that is in the agreement, and because of the way the statute is written, it is 50% greater than the PCPI of the current year or the previous year. And that calculation of $75,000, that is what it would be. And that's why we're able to do a very broad, very open, this can be for everybody, because yes, most people who are going to be experiencing crisis moments are not going to be making $75,000 in the top.
But the most that the county is going to contribute is the 150,000?
Yes, at this moment. It does state in the contract that that is our contribution, and that in no way, shape or form is this to cover all expenses of the operation of the mobile crisis response team. It is the city of Alamo Gordo, that is their program, it's their team, so we do want to ensure that they too are stepping up to ensure that their program continues to exist. It is primarily grant funded at the moment. I do apologize for kind of getting ahead of myself. I did receive several letters of support to read as public comments. Is that still appropriate to read?
All right.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, in no particular order. So this one is from Shannon Dixon. She's the Mescalero Responsible Gaming Coordinator. And she writes, "Dear Amber Mayhall, I write on behalf of Mescalero Responsible Gaming Program in support of using Otero County's healthcare assistance fund to expand and improve in a meaningful way the provisions of services provided by the city of Alamo Gordo's mobile crisis response team, a mobile health outreach service throughout Otero County to improve the continuum of care. Crisis intervention services are key elements of effective behavioral crisis continuum of care. The local crisis intervention services provide rapid response, individual assessment, stabilization and crisis resolution by trained mental health substance use treatment professionals and para-professionals in situations that involve individuals who are presumed or known to have mental health conditions and/or substance use disorder or SUD. Crisis intervention helps individuals avoid unnecessary emergency room use, hospitalization and/or detention and into the appropriate health treatment and other services and supports as needed. I have not had a personal or professional experience with the MCRT. However, my program works closely with the Otero County Community Health Council, and they have reported about the great things that the MCRT have accomplished. This program has saved lives and prevented additional trauma that can be caused by hospitalization or indoor detention. If the city and county commission approves this agreement, it will allow MCRT to reach many more patients throughout Otero County. It will provide a service to the smaller, more rural areas of Otero County. I hope this would extend to Mescalero, since it is part of Otero County. In my line of work, I deal with compulsion gamblers. Compulsive gamblers have the highest suicide rate, highest suicide attempt of any other addiction. Having a regional MCRT is greatly needed in Otero County. Mescalero Responsible Gaming Program will participate in the steering committee and any other meetings to help develop an annual and coordinated plan, and we look forward to the continuing efforts by the local leadership to improve quality of life for all Otero County residents. Sincerely, Shannon Dixon, Mescalero Responsible Gaming Coordinator." This one is from Jennifer Bruger. She is the supervisor of the Community Connections and Physician Practices Quality Department Manager at Gerald Champion. "I write on behalf of Community Connections, the Department of Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center, in support of using Otero County's healthcare assistance fund to help expand and improve in a meaningful way the provisions of services provided by the city of Alamo Gordo's mobile crisis response team, a mobile health outreach service throughout Otero County to improve the continuum of care." This is the same paragraph as the first one, but it does read, "Crisis intervention services are a key element of an effective behavioral health crisis continuum of care. Local crisis intervention services provide rapid response, individual assessment, stabilization and crisis resolution by trained mental health and substance use treatment professionals and para-professionals in situations that involve individuals who are presumed or known to have a mental health condition and/or substance use disorder. Crisis intervention helps individuals avoid unnecessary emergency room use, hospitalization or detention and into the appropriate health treatment and other services and supports as needed. Community Connections, the new Department of Gerald Champion Regional Medical Center, provides assistance through the help of community health workers, or CHWs, to residents throughout Otero County. A CHW is a frontline public health worker who is a trusted member of and/or has an unusually close understanding of the community served. CHWs become part of the patient's care team by addressing any challenges they face with regard to their own health or that of their family. All community members are served and they do not have to be a patient at Gerald Champion. As such, we encounter a number of community members who are not equipped to serve due to substance related problems. That can happen for many reasons, untreated mental illness, including untreated substance use disorder, drug interactions, overdose, withdrawal and et cetera. If the county and city commission approve this agreement, we will be able to have the confidence that the clients we are unable to serve that may be in crisis or prone to crisis will be able to serve, be served by those who are qualified and equipped..." crisis will be able to serve, be served by those who are qualified and equipped to do so. And we look forward to the continuing efforts by local leadership to improve quality of life for all Otero County residents." Jennifer Bruegger, Supervisor of Community Connections and Physician Practices Quality Department Manager of Gerald Champion. This one is from the Otero County Health Council. Dear Miss May Hall, on behalf of Otero County Community Health Council, I write in strong support of using Otero County's Healthcare Assistance Fund to support the expansion and increase reach of the City of Almagordo Mobile Crisis Response Team throughout Otero County. As you know, Crisis Intervention Services are a key element of effective community response to support people experiencing a mental health or substance-related crisis. And Crisis Intervention Services include rapid response, individual assessment, stabilization, and crisis resolution by trained mental health and substance use treatment professionals and care professionals in situations that involve persons with mental health conditions or substance use disorder. Effective crisis intervention supports individuals, families, and our community by reducing unnecessary emergency room use, hospitalizations, and/or detention, and increases connection to appropriate healthcare and social services support. Many of our OCCHC members and our executive team already support the MCRT through participation as crisis intervention team trainers and advocates. We have been advocating for increased funding for, or in expansion of, the MCRT for several years. We look forward to our continued participation on the CIT Steering Committee and to providing technical assistance as input, and input as needed as the county collaborate to expand the MCRT to better serve all of Otero County. And thank you for the opportunity to align our efforts and make Otero County a place where all people have a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible, and we look forward to our ongoing collaboration.
Girl, you need some water?
Yeah, my mouth is dry. Does anyone have any water?
Here. Got a lot of reading.
Thank you for that. This one is from David Chavez. I write on behalf of myself, David Chavez, in support of using Otero County's Healthcare Assistance Fund to help expand and improve in a meaningful way the provision of services provided by the city of Almagordo's Mobile Crisis Response Team, a mobile mental health outreach service throughout Otero County to improve the continuum of care. Crisis Intervention Services are a key element of effective behavioral health crisis continuum of care, and Mobile Crisis Intervention Services provide rapid response, individual assessment, stabilization, and crisis resolution by trained mental health and substance use treatment professionals and care professionals in situations that involve individuals who are presumed or known to have a mental health condition and/or substance use disorder. Crisis intervention helps individuals avoid unnecessary emergency room use, hospitalizations, and/or detention, and into the appropriate health treatment and other services and supports as needed. As Director of the Mescalero Apache Head Start Program, it is our goal to assist families in achieving positive goals and expectations. Too often, we see our families affected by the negative impacts of mental and behavioral health issues, and having a mobile asset to call upon would be a great assistance not only to our families but to our community as a whole. I, David Chavez, will participate in the steering committee and any other meetings to help develop an annual improvement plan. And we look forward to the continuing efforts by our local leadership to improve quality of life for all Otero County residents. Sincerely, David Chavez. Only a couple more, I promise.
Okay.
I'd read them all day if I could. All right, this one is from Maureen Smidl. She is the Health Promotionist Specialist for Otero County, and she got permission to provide an official statement in her capacity. Dear Otero County Commissioners and Leadership, this letter is submitted in support of the proposed intergovernmental agreement for a regional Mobile Crisis Response Team Services, the MCRT. New Mexico Department of Health recognizes the importance of addressing mental health needs for New Mexicans. As a local, I have seen the success of EPD's existing Mobile Crisis Response Team. MCRT provides more, provides support and intervention when needed for people living with mental illness and/or substance use. As you know, mental health and emotional well-being of residents throughout the county is a significant health concern. We see MCRT, such as outlined in the proposed agreement, as a proactive and positive strategy to address the mental health crisis and to address emergency response to those crises. The goal of MCRT has been to collaborate with community resources and service agencies to reduce and divert the use of corrections whenever possible. MCRT strives to connect individuals living with mental illness or substance use disorders with the most appropriate level of care available, as well as cultivate collaborations among community resources. This approach can save funds as well as lives. The positive impact of EPD's MCRT has been felt in the community, and I applaud the county for considering this important next step to enhance behavioral health responsive in Otero County. Sincerely, Maureen Smidl, Health Promotion Specialist for Otero County, New Mexico Department of Health. The Counseling Center, Kim Richards, Executive, Chief Executive Officer. Dear Miss May Hall, on behalf of the Counseling Center, TCC, I am writing in support of Otero County Healthcare Assistance Fund to support the expansion of the Almagordo Mobile Crisis Response Team throughout Otero County. TCC is a longstanding behavioral health organization within this community that knows how important it is to have trained mental health and substance use professionals to respond effectively when a crisis arises. The Counseling Center works with individuals and families that are often struggling or in crisis and need support services. MCRT has referred individuals to TCC or services on a few occasions, and has worked in partnerships with shared clients. We recognize the value of the Mobile Crisis Response Team's ability to de-escalate or de-huge a situation without adding more trauma to individuals that are experiencing a mental health or substance use episode is much better for the individuals and the community. We also recognize the cost effectiveness of having MCRT within this county to reduce costs in emergency room visits. We hope that the Mobile Crisis Response Team will receive the necessary funding to increase services throughout Otero County in the future. I got two, one.
You said that five ago.
Well, you know what? I'm happy that I get, I get support. So this one is from 100% Otero, and this is from Lisa Yale, Co-Founder, Board of Directors, and Vice President.
Dear Miss May Hall, I write on behalf of Otero County in support of the Otero County Healthcare Assistance Fund to help expand and improve in a meaningful way the provision of services provided by the City of Almagordo's Mobile Crisis Response Team, a mobile mental health outreach service throughout Otero County to improve the continuum of care. The Crisis Intervention Services are a key element of an effective behavioral health crisis continuum of care. Mobile Crisis Intervention Services provide rapid response, individual assessment, stabilization, and crisis resolution by trained mental health and substance use treatment professionals and care professionals in situations that involve individuals who are presumed or known to have a mental health condition and/or substance use disorder. And Crisis Intervention helps individuals avoid unnecessary emergency room use, hospitalizations, and/or detention, and into the appropriate health treatment and other services and supports as needed. 100% Otero has been supportive of MCRT while it has addressed the behavioral health needs of Almagordo. Now we support the program's expansion throughout Otero County. 100% Otero is dedicated, 100% Otero is dedicated to helping children by helping families throughout the county. Our 2019 survey of county residents indicated that 38% of respondents needed behavioral health, mental health, or substance misuse assistance. And of those, over half had difficulty accessing such services. We feel sure that the need is even greater in a crisis situation. We look forward to the continuing efforts by local leadership to improve the quality of life for all Otero County residents. Lisa Yale, Co-Founder, Board of Directors, Vice President of 100% Otero.
I was also emailed by Judge Snyder. She indicated to me that she would be watching this meeting remotely, and should the commission decide to hear her opinion, that she made her phone number available to me so that the board, this board of commissioners can call her. However, that is up to you, how you wish to.
Sheriff Black, will this be a benefit to the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's going to give us a lot of resources that do not utilize the program. Something I visited with Chief, sorry, Chief and Deputy Chief are here today and they supported this also. Chief Guinness, we told Russell was here earlier, he had lead, I think all law enforcement is, and it's supported this.
Okay, good. And Julianne, we have this in our budget already, correct?
This is actually, this is actually in Amber's budget, yes.
But we've already, it's already in there. It's not additional.
No.
And I saw in here that, and I know this is never going to happen in a million years, that they don't use all the money, the county gets it back, but I will not hold my breath on that.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure you can use that.
I hope, I really hope that they use money.
Yeah, they'll use it.
Yes, we would be able to get back any funds that may be not utilized, and that would also be utilized to, should the issue ever arise, address any funding, either increase or decrease as necessary. Hopefully, if the agreement is meeting that the services are needed, they're being utilized, and this is a benefit to the community.
Okay, all right. I don't have any more questions. Do you have anything?
No, you asked between Sheriff Black and Chief Gittin, they both were in support of it. I do know that there is a lot of mental issues out there right now. So I think it's a great program, and hopefully, we can support it, so.
All right. Okay, all right. Okay. Can I make a motion for the approval of intergovernmental agreement for Regional Mobile Crisis Response Team, MCRT, in the amount of $150,000 annually?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Amber.
Get your money. You get the award for the most emails or the most letters. Okay, item 21, request approval of a community partner agreement between Otero County and Dimension NM1 LLC.
Commissioner Abby Reed is here today to discuss this item.
Do you have a lot of letters to read?
I don't.
Okay, because if you do, I need to go to the bathroom, so, okay, we're good.
Mine will be short. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Abby Reed, and I represent Dimension Energy. We are a community solar developer, so that means we specialize in projects like the two we permitted in Tulareosa and Almagordo. We are a turnkey developer, so we develop and construct these projects and own them for their entire lifetime. What really sets community solar apart is that it functions as a shared round-mounted solar facility to provide access to renewable energy for those who can otherwise not have it on their homes. So around 75% of people cannot have solar on their homes due to the angle of their roof, not owning their home, or just the cost. In April of 2021, New Mexico passed the Community Solar Act to provide access to renewable energy for previously underserved communities. So these projects are approximately 30 acres of land each, which comes out to five megawatts, and provide subscriptions to 1,500 residents each. So local community members can sign up to the project, or receive guaranteed savings of 30% on their monthly PNM energy bill for the 30-year lifetime of the project. That also applies if a resident moves within PNM service territory, they will still be honored with that agreement. So the Public Regulation Commission is opening the program for bids in the coming month or so. Only 125 megawatts of projects are available within PNM service territory, which means approximately 25 projects total, likely 10 full that are going to apply. So the program is going to be extremely competitive. The PRC is going to score projects on a rubric with a number of items heavily favoring projects with community involvement and engagement. So that is exactly why we are putting these partnership agreements in place, to try and maximize the amount that we can give back to the community and also ensure that Otero County will receive these projects. So for each project that is awarded at the start of next year, we are offering to provide Otero County with $50,000 of funding, which Pamela Heltner and I decided could be well spent with ZTrans. We thought that that was sort of the best way to assist the county. In exchange, we hope that the county will support our outreach efforts, especially to community members that would otherwise be challenging to reach when the time comes to subscribe the project. We'll provide an additional $100 per subscriber that the county helps to enroll in these projects. Having county support really helps to legitimize these projects that can otherwise seem too good to be true for residents. So I just want to say thank you so much to Ms. Heltner. I'm extremely grateful for the relationship so far that I've been able to build with the county, and we're really excited as a developer to have the opportunity to help get back.
So what is your ask of the county?
So my ask of the county is to sign our community partnership agreement. And then that we present as part of our applications to the PRC to show that we have these discussions and we have a good partnership in place for when we receive the awards for the project.
So basically, we sign the letters, saying it's a good deal, we get 50 grand, give it to ZTrans, and people benefit from it on their lower electric bill?
Yeah, so it's $50,000 per project, and there's two projects. But the catch is really how competitive the program is. We are trying to do everything in our power right now to set ourselves apart so that we are selected and awarded the capacity within the program.
So you're only going to do 25? Is that what?
25 projects in PNM service territory. Yeah, and another item that I forgot to mention is we will also give all Otero County residents, like, first access to subscribe to the projects, too.
Pamela, you have anything to add to this?
I don't. As you and I had discussed in my office, I believe yesterday, that we were hoping to have this funding for ZTrans because we know in their need of that to keep that route, but the money is not available yet. That's why we went ahead and funded the $25,000 today. But this could help them in the future to offset what we give them out of general fund.
So when would this be funded?
We don't know that it will. It'll be sometime in the spring. I think it's the earliest that they're going to start processing the projects. But this whole agreement's contingent on Dimension actually being awarded a project. And if it's not, then we get no money and they have no project.
Yeah, so we'll likely know, like, the start of next year, probably in the first quarter, whether or not we're awarded the project. So probably, like, around February or March time would be my guess.
They're seeking this agreement because it will potentially place them higher in the competitive sphere because they have an established relationship with the local It's kind of why there is this ask, is because it might help them actually get a project.
And it'll also really help us get subscribers if we do get a project and help to, like, reach underserved communities. Because right now, we're, we're guaranteeing that at least 50% of the subscribers that we sign up to the projects are going to be low-income, and those can be really difficult to reach. So we also think that that'll help legitimize our outreach efforts.
So the county is, county's going in strictly as a support into this, no liability?
We'll make an effort to help support the project and get the word out. So we'll help promote the project.
Right, but there's no financial liability of any kind?
Yeah.
My kind of deal. All right, you have any more questions or anything?
No.
Let me pull this, get my work out, just turning this book. Okay. Ready to, you have any more questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I make a motion for the approval of a community partner agreement between Otero County and Dimension NM1 LLC.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We need to table this next one.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna hold this number 22 until after we go into executive session, so we're going to move on to number 23. Discuss and consider forming a ditch maintenance crew within the Otero County Road Department to address drainage issues.
Can you call Matt back up?
Okay.
I put this on the agenda strictly for discussion, if there's anything that we could get possibly put together before budget time next year. This is pertaining to, we have a lot of flooding around the county. We haven't had a lot of maintenance on the county easements in quite a while. So what I was, asked Tom to try to put together is some information, what it would take for a crew to do annual full-time maintenance. I understand that there's difficulties between private property, ditches, and drainage versus to where the county can get on. A lot of the issues that I have personally been dealing with this year during the flooding is massive overgrowth. A lot of the ditches are filled with soot, debris, to where they can't drain, they plug up, they jump the ditch, they do the flooding. Some of these ditches are in county easement, some of them are on private property. Right now, I understand from Mr. Porter, the shortage of personnel to put this crew together. So I was just trying to, try to come up with some ideas. Matt, the reason I asked you to come back in, this is a big part of you, too. Is there any FEMA grants for preventive maintenance that we could? Our biggest expense here is going to be setting up the equipment, which is, by the time we get all the equipment to do this crew, you're looking at about a million bucks in equipment. The other is like $400,000 for the personnel, which works out to about eight. Isn't that it, Tom, about eight personnel?
There were the employees from Foreman all the way down to Labor.
So what I was going to ask is if we could all kind of put our heads together, if we could look at some of these grants that are out there. I would think as much as FEMA has to pay out in flooding issues, that they would welcome a, some type of a maintenance program if there is something like that. Tom, I know you're looking all the time at stuff like that. I just, I'm open for suggestions. That's what this is all about. That's, we've kind of made it through our monsoon. I would like to try to attack this before the next one hits, or maybe have a plan of some sort. I'm open for any suggestions from y'all, any public suggestions. We just want to try to get this. We, I understand this only really comes into effect two months out of the year, but those two months are, for some people, are dreaded.
Right.
So do you have any suggestions, either one of you?
On your grant request, I will research to see if any of this falls underneath, anything that FEMA has established already.
Okay. Is there, well, it would all be FEMA, any of the flooding, any of the drainage? Just a sec. I would think would come under, on the FEMA part, through emergency services? Is that still, would all jump back to FEMA?
It would.
It would? Yes, ma'am, you have?
Yes. My name is Donna Swanson. I wonder if you can look into the recently passed federal infrastructure bill for funding for that?
Are you familiar with any of those? Are you?
Yeah, we're, actually, I'm working with some of them, with Wilson on roads right now.
Okay. Can you look and see if there's? Thank you.
Would these employees, would they be like road employees most of the year?
They'd give another branch of the road department throughout. And that's why it would need its own Foreman, because I couldn't stretch that one, the Foreman I have for the road projects back then to cover both aspects of it, which goes into some of the issues you and I have talked about. You know, the manpower issues alone, I'm still six employees shy on the roadside of it. Trying to find eight more to fill another gap would have to be a bigger way to do that.
Would that help, though, once we hired those for the ditch crew, if they helped you out the rest of the year?
Okay, so the thing is, the two months we're talking about, that's the two months we're pretty much going to be stalemated because we're not going to be able to do anything other than, you know, emergency repairs. This is going to be a 10-month-a-year job, just getting everything back up to par. The other problem we have that you and I have discussed with, along with Matt and RB, is the amount of research it takes to find out what we do have reasons. I mean, that one subdivision that you and I worked on, you know, that was a couple of days of mine, a couple of days of HEMA, RB, just to find out that they weren't our ditches.
So we can work on private property as long as we have their permission, correct?
No.
No?
Anti-donation.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a cost issue.
That kind of stinks. Clean it all up, and then you got a mess, and then you clean it all up.
We could potentially do a one-time deal where we do it for the protection of the county. The welfare is an exception that we could do it. We can't make a practice of doing it, but maybe if it's a one-time deal, we could potentially do a whole county-wide, this is flood mitigation, and going and, as long as we have permission, go in and clean some of these out. So we can look at, another thing that we can look at is establishing a flood commission. Matt and I are looking into that. It comes with its own potential negative and positive issues, but that's a statutory option that is available. Once it's established, the governor is the entity that appoints the members of the commission. So that's a consideration, but it also does open up state money and some further options for mitigating floods. But we need to talk to some of the other counties that actually have them and get more information on whether that is a route that we want to go or not.
And again, this is why I kind of brought this up now, to where we can start trying to throw all these ideas in, try to work. It, it's a problem that's not going to go away. The more this county builds, the more people divert stuff, the more, it's only going to get worse. So one of our biggest problems is that a lot of these subdivisions, like we've been going through, that we can't do anything through, or there's easements through there and people have already rerouted water. So it, it'll be a full-time job, just trying to get started and try to get established. But I really feel it's not going to cure all the flooding, but I think if we can get some maintenance and control, it's going to slow a bunch of it down and it's going to help a lot of the people. So that's, that's really all I was trying to get together, is if there's any way possible, we can put our heads together and find anything to make it work. I understand a million bucks or 1.4 is a lot of money to try to get started on this. I know Julianne can pull some magic every once in a while, but that would be probably stretching it. But that's why I'm asking for, if you can check and see if any of the firms, and if we go the route that RB was talking about, if there's any state money that would be able to apply to any of this. We're not the only county that floods, I can assure you. So, anyway, that's all I have on that. If anybody else has anything to talk about.
I think it's a great idea. We need that bad.
Tom, you have any?
No. You and I have had discussions on this. You know my concerns.
Yeah.
You know, and a classic example, and the one I was telling Commissioner Mabley about, last year's rainy season, we had a subdivision that the entire neighborhood, one of us building them ditches, we started pulling them and they found out that their manicured lawns that went up to the road edge were disappearing. We actually had to have the sheriffs come out, we had a gentleman out there throwing rocks at us.
Yeah, there's, there's good points and bad points, but I guarantee you that gentleman would be happy if that water wasn't running in his front door. No, it still wasn't. I know, we talked to a guy the other day, that he didn't care about his grass and his manicure. He wanted the water to quit running through, through his house. So they are out there, they realize there's problems. But that's, again, we'll have to, gonna, this whole deal is going to have to revolve around getting BLM and state involved in it to see if, and I don't know how that would ever work, but a lot of the issues coming to Otero County, the residents, is coming off of BLM and state land. So they're going to have to be a player in it somewhere. So, anyway, that's all, just something to start thinking about.
Thank you guys. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. All right, so I guess this leads us to our commissioner discussion.
Yeah. Okay, hang on one second. All right, this, this last month is, has been really pretty busy compared to all the rainfall and stuff. So my phone and emails have been getting full with that. Again, like we were just talking about, I was wanting to bring this together. This Friday, at Tuerosa, they're having a, the pecan weevil, another meeting on that, that is going to affect a lot of our local farmers around here, if they implement in what they're trying to do. Again, we'd have to wait and see. This is, my understanding is going to be a decision made by the Department of Agriculture and one other group. I, I'm still in big favor of trying to hear some proposals or on the contracting the jail service. It's obvious we're having a hard time trying to fulfill, so we're never going to be able to fulfill a 50,000 square foot building or take care of it properly with the manpower that we have. So I would like to hear the options on what we have, or proposals, or the costs, or...
Okay, commissioners, RB and I have discussed this in great length. We were in the process of preparing the scope of work that came out of the bid we used last time. I have had several interested parties reach out to me. The problem is, if we don't do the bid process, we're going to get back varied proposals that we cannot equally compare. We'd be comparing oranges and apples. So we have decided to formally go out to bid. It will be a short process. We're working on getting that scope of work finalized. We just discussed it this morning, so we can get that out and hopefully have something back to you next month. But we do have, I have had several phone calls from companies that are interested. So I think we may have four or five bids.
Okay, perfect, great. I'm glad there's some interest in it.
Yes.
I'm also, I keep following up with Matt, asking when some of these, I call them like abandoned buildings and stuff, where they're going to go up on, on the auction. My understanding from Rachel Black across there, they, they're not, they don't know when the auctioneer person is going to come through. I guess it's been backed up so much since the COVID, that whenever he shows up, or they put him on the list to come here, then that's when these houses will go up for, or these properties will go up for, for auction on the block. So I'm, I'm still following up on several of those. I went to a meeting last week, actually, two weeks ago, it was a Seals Den, if I pronounced that correctly? It's, it's a tutoring, company that's coming in and trying to get set up. They have been working on a trial period with Alamogordo Department Schools. What they do is come in, they're taking this kids that are behind in their classes, say some of them are in the sixth or seventh grade, and they test, and they're at the third grade level. They're trying to work with them on an individual deal, to trying to bring them back up and catch up our kids back in Alamogordo. They are located in the Bank 34 building. We toured their facility. It's a very nice facility. It's, everything is, is almost a one-on-one type deal. They're trying to get, my understanding from what they explained to me was that the Alamogordo Public Schools are trying to get all their budget stuff together and see where they can try to fit them in budget-wise. I came to Julianne and asked if it was something that the county could support in one of the agencies that, that we do. They are a, what did you call them? A pro-profit organization?
Yes, Silven is a for-profit corporation.
Corporation.
And I spoke with our auditor, Debbie Gray, from Crevel, Grayshaw, in Las Cruces, and she stated that it would not be appropriate for the county to fund a for-profit corporation through our community services program. We typically only fund 501(c)(3)'s or other units of local government with those community services grants.
So that didn't pan out well for me. So anyway, I'm hoping that the schools can get that worked in. One last thing, I just got noticed this morning with the, with the BLM discussion on the grazing leases, that's fixing to be coming up. They are wanting to know, I had that somewhere. Anyway, they're wanting to know if we wanted to be a cooperating agent. In 2020, I believe, I was assigned to a cooperating agency. I, I am still for that. I know we need to go in front of the board for this discussion, but September 16th is the deadline, if I remembered that correctly. So I would like to, I don't know how we can do this, but I would like to participate on this or get it going. I've had several of the ranchers around with the BLM leases that this will be affecting, that are asking me to participate in it, that they want to participate. So I don't know, RB, can we...
Is this cooperating or coordinating?
This is cooperating with BLM.
They don't want to coordinate? We'd rather coordinate than cooperate?
Yeah, well, I think we do both. Just keeping all lines of communication open.
Right.
Yeah. It's going to be bringing with the plan, Bebo and Bobby have both been asking me, they're very interested in it. So we need to, I guess, sign and send back, and then we can bring it to the board next month, and then if...
You can ratify it next month.
Yeah. And then if we say no, then we just send them a letter saying we're out.
No, I would definitely want to do that.
Okay.
Help those guys out.
So that's, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Since our last meeting, I was on the Michael Schennover radio show the other day, and we talked for about an hour, and we mainly talked about the, the struggle that ranchers are having with these grazing rights. And we talked about the pecan weevil situation. And also, I attended and worked at this Otero County Heritage Days that was hosted by the Flickinger Center across the street. RB was there with his family farm with the apples and stuff. Everything there was made in Otero County. So it was a very fun event, was very well attended. We had vendors, you know, selling their, their wares, but they all had to be from Otero County. So it was really fun. So that's going to be a new annual event. We're going to try to have that every year. Also, attended a meeting over in Las Cruces with Chad Wolf. He's a former Department of Homeland Security Director, and Matt Whitaker, he's a former United States Attorney General. And they gave us a, a talk about the issues that are going on at the border with all the immigrants coming across. the immigrants coming across with the drugs and the human trafficking and how that's affecting our communities. And I attended a county meeting regarding the beginning of our annual audit. And then we just had a meet and greet, I think it was last night in High Row's Communities, or night before last, with Harlan Benson. He's running for office. And then to Gerald's point about the next meeting about the pecan weevil, if anybody's interested, it is tomorrow at 3 o'clock at the Tularosa Community Center, if anybody's interested in going to that. And then I did want to bring up today, or this coming Sunday, is the 21st anniversary of 9/11. So I would hope that everybody could remember that and don't forget what happened that day. I don't want to start bawling. Because I remember after that attack, I remember where I was when the planes hit those towers. And then not long after that, I was still living out on Hamilton Road and I saw the stealth take off and leave the base. And I just stood there and just thought how thankful I was that we had people that would actually do that for us. And I found out later that one of those pilots was my daughter Macy's soccer coach. He was going over there. So that really brought it home for me. And on that day, we had four coordinated terrorist attacks and it killed 2,977 people from 93 nations. And it led us into the Afghanistan War, which was the longest war that we've ever had. And we left it in a mess. And if you ever get a chance to see that Tunnel to Towers mobile exhibit, it's so awesome and it's so well worth it. I visited, went over in Artesia and they give tours by, the New York firefighters that were actually at 9/11 gave us the tours. And it's amazing when you can actually look at those people and know they were there. And they have artifacts like the steel beams from the towers, documentary videos, recordings of first responders. And the firefighters provided us the firsthand accounts of the day that they were there. And so I just hope that everybody will remember 9/11 on Sunday and just remember where you were at. So that's what I've got. So Pamela?
Commissioners, as you know, this has been a very stressful week.
Girl, do we know.
I apologize. I did not have time to prepare a report. I apologize.
That's okay. I'm buying the first round. Need anything?
Good morning, commissioners. Got quite a few things that I've been working on. Same like month flew by. But on the Rose Street and also on Glen Street, working on letters dealing with vehicles and trailers and the easement and getting those removed. Working with Sheriff Black on that. I submitted comments to the State's 30 by 30 Commission. Submitted some for Commissioner Matherly and I submitted some for the county. It was basically wanting to get feedback on ideas of what conservation is. And so my response to that was conservation that protects the environment while also protecting local industry and involving local industry in that management, active management of the environment and promoting industry while also conserving the land and resources. There are the comments I submitted. On 506, the counterproposal I've sent to Fort Bliss on the continued going forward agreement where they're gonna build those five crossings, I put in there basically that any damage that occurred from vehicles, military vehicles traveling on 506 would be the responsibility of the US Army, US government to repair. And it's still working its way back and forth between their parties, but they seem to be fine with that. Tom and I are working on the other side of the 506 issue, which is payment for the damage that has already occurred. And we have a claim in on that. They've sent a request for additional information from us and also additional bids. They wanted two additional bids. So we got one from Alamo Earthworks and Paving and we're waiting for one from Blankenship. And then we'll submit those answers for the additional questions that they had. We'll have those compiled by next week and submit those to them. So hopefully that'll, once they have that information, they can go ahead and process the claim and maybe we'll have an answer on what they're gonna do by next month. Met with our local search and rescue. They are wanting to, search and rescue is covered by the, falls under the umbrella of the state police. There's some issues with their activation and deployment in that, so we're looking at other ways to be able to utilize them in the county and for the sheriff department to be able to activate them and utilize them as a resource. So we're looking at the possibility of putting them under a similar capacity as our volunteer fire departments. And so researching that, Matt and I are working on it and we'll have another meeting with them soon. But sheriff department expressed desire to have them as a local resource, so seeing how we can make that happen for them. US Forest Service letters, the cease and desist letter went out and we got a response back from Director Mosley. You all received a copy of that. Working on the letter to the regional director and getting Margaret Byfield's input on that. Should have that ready to go early next week as well. The, all across the state, the clerk's offices are getting IPR requests, canned IPR requests, asking for certain election info. And each county has a different interpretation on what we should be releasing and what we shouldn't be releasing. Through New Mexico counties, there's discussion about filing a, what would be considered a friendly lawsuit against the attorney general so that the attorney general comes back and is, gives an answer on what is, an official answer on what is releasable and what is not releasable as far as election info under IPR. So we're looking at doing that. They want to know counties that were interested in it and participating. I know Clerk Holmes is on board with it and getting some further guidance because we need it. So she's on board to participate in the lawsuit. Attended meetings with two election companies this month, Dominion and Robles. Got clarifying information on their procedures and processes. Is very informative and helpful to understanding allegations that have been out there the past two years on election security and how things work. I'm compiling some of that and doing further research so that I can present information to the commission related to election security and the audit that we received last month. That way we can take steps going forward and you're able to make an informed decision on what you'd like to do. And then lastly, because of the judicial ruling that we had earlier this week, I'm having to go back and look at votes that the commission has done since January 6, 2021 to see if any of those need to be revisited because of the way the breakdown of the votes occurred. If it's going to remove one of the votes and then it's just a one-to-one, if there's any, it's one-to-one vote, we may need to revisit those votes. And it's kind of uncharted territory and figuring it out and hopefully get some input from some other attorneys on their thoughts on what it means for the county.
RB, I got another letter from, I'm pretty sure it's to the Forest Service. They're gonna start another fencing program on this spotted butterfly. It's a smaller version on what they're doing on the spotted mouse. Have you received any of that, that letter?
I don't think I received that letter.
I figured out how you fence in a butterfly.
That's a good question.
Just saying.
Good question. But that's, there's small versions and there's three different locations up here. I'll need to, I need to pull that letter back out and I'll show it to you.
I got that.
Did you?
Okay, anybody have anything else? All right. I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978, 10-15-1 for limited personnel matters. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
One second.
Excuse us.